It is now five o'clock. Today is February 7th, 2017. And I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees. Southern California Logistics Rail Authority. Southern California Logistics Airport Authority. Accessor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency. The Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority. The Victorville Water District. And the city as Housing Assets Accessor. We have roll call, please.
Councilmember Gomez.
Good afternoon.
Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Negretti.
Here.
Mayor Protem Cox.
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
Here. This is the time and place for the general public to address the City Council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda. For Government Code Section 5495-6.3. State law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. I don't see anyone in the audience. Therefore, may we have a declaration of closed session items by our city attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We have four items this evening to discuss. Items A, B, and C are all on behalf of the City Council. And there's an addendum item, which is on behalf of the City Council and the Victorville Water District. Item A is anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 5495-6.9D2. And the facts and circumstances related to that litigation are set forth on the agenda. Items B and C are both real property negotiations pursuant to Government Codes 5495-6.8. The real property and the negotiating parties are set forth on the agenda. And the addendum item is potential litigation, anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 5495-6.9D4. One potential case. To the extent there is reportable action, we will report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the six o'clock regular session.
Thank you. At this time, we will recess now to our closed session and regular session convenes at 6:00 P.M. Five o'clock. February 7th, 2017. And I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees. Southern California Logistics Rail Authority. Southern California Logistics Airport Authority. Accessor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency. The Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority. The Victorville Water District. And the city as Housing Assets Accessor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gomez.
Good evening.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
Councilmember Negretti.
Here.
Mayor Protem Cox. Mayor Garcia.
Here. May we have our closed session announcements by our city attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We had four closed session items this evening. Item A was anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 5495-6.9D2. The information related to that litigation is on the agenda. Items B and C were real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 5495-6.8. And the parties to the negotiation and the property is set forth on the agenda. The last item was an addendum item, which was on behalf of the City Council and the Victorville Water District. And it was anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 5495-6.9D4. There is reportable action only with respect to item B, real property negotiations. The City Council agreed by a vote of three to two with Councilmembers Cox and Gomez abstaining to pay $3,300 for a permanent, sorry, a temporary construction easement with respect to the property located and set forth on Exhibit B. And that is the only reportable action.
Thank you. The invocation this evening will be led by Minister Bessie Cox from Burning Bush. And the invocation, I'm sorry, the invocation is by Minister Bessie Cox, Burning Bush. And the pledge of allegiance will be led by Police Chief John Schuler. So please stand.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this Tuesday afternoon. We thank you for allowing us to be able to come together in a place of City Hall for such a time as this. We just want to thank you, God, for all of your benefits towards us. We thank you for waking us up this morning. We thank you for allowing us to make it through this day. I ask right now, God, that you bless each and every family that's represented here at this time. Bless our mayor, God. Bless each and every City Council member, God. Oh, God, we just thank you, God. We lift you up. I ask that you please touch each and every council member, God, and give them the wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, God, to counsel and to lead your people, the citizens of this community, God, in this great city of Victorville. We ask that you give them wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. We ask that you bless their families while they are here this evening, God, serving your people. We just thank you right now. We lift you up. We ask, God, that you bless our firefighters and our police officers and our military, God. We ask, God, that you bless each and every one of us, God. And allow this meeting to be a great meeting this evening, God. We just thank you right now, in the name of Jesus.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we have a special presentation. This is the annual Victorville Recycles Week competition winners. And it will be presented to you by Dana Armstrong. And I will come down and assist you.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We are here again. This is the 10th year that we've been doing Victorville Recycles Week, and I'm very pleased to be here. And I thank Mayor Garcia and the City Council for giving me the time to make this presentation. I want to recognize the winners of the Victorville Recycles Week event. It's an annual event held during the first week of November. It's sponsored by the City of Victorville Recycling Program and Bertec Waste Industries. The Victorville Recycles Week was started in November of 2007, so this is the 10th year. It is intended to increase the awareness of and participation in the city's various recycling programs by getting our local schools involved. During Victorville Recycles Week, schools participate in various activities to earn points. The schools that earn the most points win cash prizes. Nothing motivates people quite like cash. So we get a lot of participation, and it's a lot of fun. Individual students can also win prizes through the poster contest and the recycled sculpture contest. Prizes are provided by Bertec Waste Industries and the City of Victorville Recycling Program. Here are a few of the highlights from this year's events. Eighteen schools participated. We had close to 1,000 posters from eight schools for the poster contest. Forty-eight sculptures in the recycled sculpture contest. Twenty-six in-class presentations were given to about 650 students. Twelve schools signed up for recycling assembly programs featuring either Mr. Eco, the environmental superhero, or shows that teach with their presentations, Singing Green, or All That Trash. There were 22 assemblies overall, and more than 8,000 students saw those assemblies. Eight schools participated in our Community Cleanup Day in late October with 314 volunteers. Seven schools did our CRV recycling contest. We had three entries in our YouTube video contest. Five schools toured our Victor Valley Materials Recovery Facility. And all told, we figure that we made contact with over 10,000 students during this year's event. And since the event began in 2007, I estimate that we've made contact with over 76,000 students through this program. At this time, I'd like to invite Josie Vargas from Bertec to join us up front. Josie is the Municipal Program Coordinator for Bertec. And I want to acknowledge Victorville Disposal and Bertec for their support of this event. They, Victorville Disposal is our franchised hauler. They collect our trash and recyclables, and they've been a financial and otherwise supporter of this event since the beginning. Josie Vargas now does most of the work associated with this program. She's the one out there doing the presentations and the MRF tour. So I want to thank you, Josie, for all your work. And she's holding the perpetual trophy, which I will ask you to set on the table so your arms don't fall during the course of this presentation. So thank you, Josie, very much for your assistance. I want to start with the winner of the recycled sculpture contest. I would like to invite Daisley Garcia to come forward, okay? And if she wants her family or just her, it's fine. So thank you for, come on up, stand next to the mayor. That's the important person, Mayor Garcia, exactly. Daisley is a sixth grade student at Galileo Academy School of Gifted and Talented Education. We had 48 sculptures, and Daisley's winning sculpture, it's out in the foyer. As you came in or as you leave tonight, check it out. It's a great example of creative reuse. It's a desk organizer made out of various recycled cardboard tubes and newspaper. It's functional and creative, so I like that. Daisley will receive a $100 check as for being the winner of this recycled sculpture contest. Congratulations. We're going to have Mayor Garcia give you your, pardon me, I'll pick that up. There's the, that, and here's the check. And so there's the check, and there's your certificate. All right, and Sue is going to get a photo. Congratulations, Daisley, good job. All right, you can rejoin your family now. All right, great, that's up next, you got it? All right, next, I would like to invite Destiny Morales to come forward. Destiny is the winner of our poster contest. She is also a student at Galileo Academy. And there were over 1,000 posters in our poster contest, so you did a great job. You were one of a thousand, very, very excellent poster. We like the artwork and the message just to encourage people to recycle. So your poster is going to hang at the Victor Valley Materials Recovery Facility for a year. We will have it on the wall, so everybody who comes for a tour will see that poster along with the sculpture. That will also be at our Materials Recovery Facility. So congratulations, well done. Great job. And then finally, I'd like to recognize the first-place school. I'd like to invite representatives from Mountain View Montessori School to come forward. This is the fourth time that this mighty little school has won the coveted perpetual trophy for Victorville Recycles Week. This is the fourth time they've won it, and the third time in a row that they've won it. They've won it in 2014, 2015, and now 2016. They are the only school that's ever won it three times, and now the only school that's ever won it four times. So there's a big hill to climb for the other schools. Just real quickly, their students submitted 132 posters, 14 sculptures. They participated in the Community Cleanup Day. They had eight in-class presentations. They scheduled a tour of the MRF. They did everything. They did the newspaper contest, CRV contest. They collect clothing at their school. And what really impresses us is they incorporate recycling messages and themes into their curriculum. So it's not just doing these activities, it's really incorporated into their curriculum. And they have a very active and effective, and I think, model on-campus recycling program and dedicated students and teachers and faculty at their school. So as the first-place winner, you guys receive a $1,000 check from Bertec Waste Industries, which is awesome. And more importantly, you get to retain the coveted Victorville Recycles Week perpetual trophy. So congratulations, wonderful job. Yeah, that's for me. Want to hold the trophy while she takes the picture? Do you think you can? Little girl, big trophy. Do you think you can do it? Congratulations, great job. And yep, you get to take the trophy home. Oh, one more. I think that one's going to go on social media if it's on the iPhone. Okay, great, thank you, congratulations. So those are our trophies. And then I would just like to wrap up very quickly. In the grand scheme of things, why do we do this? You know, in the big picture, recycling is a great idea. We have programs, we want to encourage people to use them. The city in 20, last fiscal year, we spent almost $3 million to dispose of trash at the county landfill. And it's, you know, we're disposing of solid waste, but it's really also a waste of resources. So as much as we can put in those blue barrels, it saves the city money, it saves ratepayers' money. It saves you all money on your monthly sanitation bill. But it also saves resources, it helps the environment. It provides industry with the materials they need to help create jobs and promote the economy. So it's a really important program. It's not just about saving the environment, but it's about saving our financial resources. And that's what we're trying to do, is promote this program and get everybody on board to recycle as much as possible. And just in closing, again, I want to thank all the, I want to thank Bertec, I want to thank Josie. I want to thank all the teachers, the students, the faculty and staff for their participation. It was a great success this year, and we look forward to working with everybody again next year. So how about a round of applause for our winners and our sponsors? Thank you.
You know, there are a lot of wonderful things about this program, but the one I like best is we get so many kids coming to a council meeting. Welcome, all of you. Come back when you can stay longer.
Congratulations, take care, guys.
At this time, may we have our city clerk present the agenda to the council? And any revisions or additions, please?
Yes, Mayor Garcia. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the City Council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council. And there is one revision to tonight's agenda, which is on the dais for the City Council. And copies have also been provided for the public. This is a revision to item number D10. There is a letter of interest and resume of Vivian Rubio, who is being proposed for appointment by, to the Community Services Advisory Committee by Councilmember Gomez. And that is provided this evening. Those are the, all the revisions I have, Mayor Garcia.
Thank you. Now we have the consent calendar. And item C1 through C20 can be approved with one motion unless there is an item that needs to be pulled for discussion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull item C1. Have just a general question for staff on items C8, 9, 10, and 11. And schedules that reach back to November. Why are they all coming before us now? Why don't they get approved as we go along?
And I don't have the answer to that question specifically.
Not that it matters.
Yeah, I don't see anybody here from Finance, and I don't see Joe, who's here representing Administrative Services, jumping up to answer that question, so.
Try and get me to answer tomorrow.
There was some kind of a delay I don't have the answer to, but we'll certainly get a memo out to the council as soon as possible this week explaining what the delay was on these.
Could it have been because of elections or holidays?
It could be holidays for some of it, but I don't think it would have been the election. No, we don't do a whole lot during the election time. That's for you guys to have fun.
I would just like to pull C1.
Did you?
I'll move approval except for C1.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Okay, Doug, you're here. C1, the first page, this is dealing with some excess water revenue surplus assessment funds in the Baldi Mesa District that's now being transferred to the main water district. On the first page, it talks about a surplus of $312,000. And on the second page, it talks about a surplus of $31,000. Obviously a typo.
The correct number is.
Which one is a typo?
The correct number is the 312 on the first page.
312, okay. Now my.
I caught it too. Sorry, Doug. I caught it too, sorry, Doug, to make you come up.
Are these, these were assessments placed on the property tax bills of Baldi Mesa residents to cover improvements made in the Baldi Mesa District. Am I right? Okay, and now there's a $312,000 surplus that we're just going to bring over and bring it into the water district rather than returning it to the taxpayers in Baldi Mesa District. Can you explain why we're doing it that way?
The funds that were surplus were actually reserve funds and are actually being spent on improvements in WID2. So they're actually offsetting expenses for improvements in the WID2 system.
Using the surplus to reimburse the water district for improvements they have used.
Correct.
Hunting for.
Correct, yeah. WID2 is the former Baldi Mesa, so it is staying within the service territory that the ratepayers paid that.
Oh, so they will stay in the Baldi Mesa.
Yeah, that is correct, yes.
I'll move approval of item C1.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
This is a point of information. When we consolidated the two water districts with the city, we set up two water improvement districts. Water Improvement District Number One, we call it WID1, is the former Victor Valley Water District. And WID2 is the former Baldi Mesa. So we do still keep those funds separate per the agreements and rules according to LAFCO.
Can it reach a point in time where there's no longer a need or reason to keep them separate?
At some point, yes. The big reason why the former Baldi Mesa, now WID2, can't be combined is because of the debt that can't be paid by the former Victor Valley Water customers. And likewise, Victor Valley had, at the time, tens of millions of dollars in improvement monies that it had saved. And those can only be spent within that territory. So once those monies are spent and the debt is repaid in the other part of the district, then they can be combined and the improvement districts can then go away.
That mean new funds that are accumulating are not accumulating in the two individual districts?
That is correct. Several years ago, we took actions to isolate the debt of former Baldi Mesa and the assets of former Victor Valley so that we could then operate the district on a future basis as a single district. So effectively, it is operating as a single district with the exception of primarily those two issues.
Yes, yes, that one has been voted on.
That one passed. I just wanted to provide information. We have new council members, we have new members of the public who may not know what we're talking about when we say WID1 and WID2 and improvement districts and all that.
Okay, so now we're on item D, written communications. And item D1, purchase of new 2017, I hope I say this right, Heister Fortas Forklift Model HADFT. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board of Directors approve the bid award and purchase of one new diesel-engine forklift from National Auto Fleet Group for the amount of $56,008.61 in support of Southern California Logistics Airport Maintenance.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Ms. Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D2, award of contract to just ran construction. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the Victorville Water District Board of Directors award a contract to just ran construction in the amount of $112,360 for the Schmidt Park and Ballfield reclaimed water connections project, BM17-052.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D3, award of contract to DDH Apple Valley Construction, Inc. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the Victorville Water District Board of Directors award a contract to DDH Apple Valley Construction, Inc. in the amount of $1,156,882 for the water pipeline small diameter replacement Old Town Phase 2 Project, BM17-056.
Madam Mayor, just had a question or two. Brian, is this yours? There's a project area map at the back, and there are some shades of, I guess there's shades of gray, really, some darker and lighter. And since this is going to be a huge project in Old Town, I wish everybody in Old Town were here to realize that we're making a major replacement of old water lines with new eight-inch lines. Can you explain exactly? Can you explain exactly what of those lines are being replaced?
Well, be honest, I'm not going to remember every line in Old Town that's being replaced. This is a follow-up to the Phase 1 project, but most of the lines are in the alleys, not out in the street. There are alleys that run both directions, and that's where almost all the, that's where most of the water lines are in Old Town, and so that's where we're going to be replacing where we picked up from the last project.
There's some darker gray and some lighter gray, look like north, south, and east-west. All of these are going to be replaced? Excellent.
And for the public's benefit, since you have the map in front of you, it roughly goes from Second Street to Seventh Street and from D Street all the way to A, so all the water lines within those four streets will be replaced.
Thank you for that information. Do we have a motion on that?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D-4, award of contract to Borden Excavating, Inc. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the Victorville Water District Board of Directors award a contract to Borden Excavating, Inc. in the amount of $257,555 for the Luna Service Line Replacement Project, BM-17-061.
I'm going to fire another question here, I'm sorry. I'm getting interested in all this water stuff. This is an add-on to the Luna paving project, isn't it?
Yeah, this is intended to get ahead of that.
And the replacement, in Old Town, we're going from, I guess, in one and two inch up to eight? What are we replacing here and what are we replacing it with? Anybody know?
Oh, Brian, we got more technical than Keith and I could get to.
Are we going to eight inch, I guess, is the main question?
And this is strictly just replacing services that come from the main to the meter. It's a service replacement project to replace it with the copper, which is the new standard. So, this particular project is only for services.
It's not the mains.
Correct.
As all the service lines.
The main didn't need to be replaced.
I can, the desire you noted, Councilman Kennedy, that we're trying to get this done before the street's repaired, because we don't want to do a major street repair, then have one of these lines blow, which we know they will, and then suddenly we're digging up a brand-new street and creating problems for us in the future.
Are any of those services in Mountain View Acres not part of the city, but they are part of the water district?
That's right. We serve that area.
Yeah, the water district goes throughout Mountain View Acres, but the city does not.
Motion?
Move approval.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D-5, award of contract to Twining, Inc. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the city council award a contract to Twining, Inc. in the amount of $130,000 for the quality assurance and materials testing for upcoming capital improvement program projects.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Negretti, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And I'm just adding this so that the public is aware that I call out the item, and then our clerk reads the recommendation to give you more information on the item, so you know what we're voting on. Now we have item D-6, award of consultant professional services provider agreement to Hoffman Southwest Corporation DBA Professional Pipe Services. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the city council awarded consultant professional services provider agreement to Hoffman Southwest Corporation DBA Professional Pipe Services in the amount of $4,199,270 for sewer line closed-circuit television services.
Madam Mayor, since it's sewer, I really have to ask a question.
Certainly.
For $4 million, couldn't we buy the camera ourselves? Four million dollars, that's a huge job. I mean, this is.
Yeah.
About forty-seven.
The camera is a very small portion of the cost. This is really all about the number of hours it's going to take to video and document 440 miles of sewer pipeline.
Can you explain how that's going to work? Do they go on each manhole and just go from manhole to manhole? They have a forty-mile-long camera?
So, the way.
It's a lot of money. I think the public has.
It is a lot of money.
It is a lot of money, and it's more than just a video documentation, it's a full condition of assessment of the pipes with recommendations on what needs to be done to repair or replace each pipe segment. And the way this works is, this company has robotic cameras on a little tractor that goes, it's inserted in a manhole, and it goes from manhole to manhole down the sewer line, and part of the cost is also cleaning the line, because the lines have to be cleaned in advance to make sure that the video can get the clean pipe and.
Sewer has to be cleaned.
The sewer has to be cleaned prior, that's part of the cost also. There's also an engineering company that is part of this contract that will give recommendations that will be used for our future capital projects.
How do we do the cleaning while sewage is flowing?
Doug could probably answer that question better than I could.
Yeah, we clean a lot of our pipes with flow in it, but the ones that have heavy flows will do it in the middle of the night, so when the flows are low. One other thing this company brings is multiple trucks and cameras, so for the city to do this within a year timeframe, we would need a lot of cameras and crews and personnel to do it. So, this will get us a snapshot of our entire sewer system within a calendar year.
And you think you can get it done this year?
Boy, they say they can, and they have the crews, and they're all over the country, actually. They're a pretty big company, and we went through the RFP process and looked at more than one firm, and they gave us a schedule and committed to it, and, you know, it looked reasonable.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we do have to move money from the CIP forward a year. That's part of the action is to, because we had funding, but not enough funding in the CIP for this year, that's already been part of the approved budget, so we have to move money from 2018 as well.
And the four million doesn't involve any replacement of any lines? It's just cleaning, inspecting, videoing, and deciding what we're going to have to replace?
That is correct. It's not for the, any repair or replacement of our pipes, it's only for the video and the condition assessment and then recommendations on what we will need to do in the future.
And it's safe to assume that those sewer lines are of all different ages?
That's right. Different ages, different materials.
Thank you.
One of the things you're going to see in there is in the first six months, it's going to be all the pipelines older than 1990, so likely we'll see more necessary repairs coming forward as a result of this CCTV, as a result of videoing. The second half will be the newer pipes, so we should hopefully see a lot less needs.
What's the material used in those sewer lines?
It could be clay, it could be concrete, it could be PVC.
Could be PVC.
Mm-hmm. The older stuff will be concrete and clay.
Does PVC have a good wear life?
Yeah, it'll be the better newer pipe, for sure.
Yeah, okay.
How often is this done, and what's the time span?
We're going to do this by the end of the calendar year, and then after that, we'll be on about a five-year cycle, so we'll have to go through this every five years, so we'll split it up. And we may use a different technology at that point, too. It'll be a little bit cheaper. It'll still be expensive, but a little bit cheaper.
Is it correct to assume that the PVC lines are going to be cleaner and less inclined to collect rust and whatnot, or do we even know?
Depends on slope and flows as much as anything as well, and just, you never know if you have a lip in there or something, you know, it just didn't get laid right, or it got disturbed or something happened to it. You know, once it collects something, it'll be a spot, or some of it depends on the type of flows it's getting in the industries, and commercial, industrial, what's flowing into it.
Thank you.
So, this is the first of its kind, right? And every five years, this is going to be occurring, but it's not going to be 4.1 million thereafter?
We'll do about a fifth of the system every year.
Oh, okay.
So, I guess you could say it would be 800,000 or less. We won't have the condition assessment necessarily, so it should be quite a bit less. We won't have the engineering firms going in there. We'll just be getting a look at it, probably having staff analyze, or we may have them, you know, the crews identify areas for our staff to look at, but they'll compile the video, get it in our GIS, and let us know where they see trouble areas.
So, why did we decide this in December 2017? Was there something that you guys saw that we needed to start doing this process?
It's just something in our SSMP, in our Sewer System Management Plan, that we've agreed to, that the state has come down on a lot of sewer agencies, requiring them to understand exactly what condition their sewer pipes are in, and the only way to do that is to send a camera down it. So, we haven't been through our whole system in quite some time, and we've agreed to go ahead and complete this in this year time, and then get on a regular cycle thereafter.
You know, most people don't think too much about sewer. If a water line breaks, you just got water. Electricity breaks, but when sewage breaks, we have major, major problems.
Exactly.
This kind of preventive work is just really important.
Other questions? Thank you.
Madam Mayor, move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D-7, amendment number one to service provider agreement with HR Green. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the city council appropriate an additional $75,000 from General Fund 100 to continue on-call and map-checking services with HR Green.
And move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D-8, amendment number one to consultant professional services provider agreement with Woodard and Curran, Inc. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the Victorville Water District Board of Directors approve the award amount of $60,020 from a State Water Resources Control Board Planning Grant and approve amendment number one to the consultant professional services provider agreement with Woodard and Curran, Inc. for a water recycling study in an amount not to exceed $120,040.
Madam Mayor, just one question. Brian, what are they going to study? What's the study going to do? Study recycling water? What are we going to get out of it?
Well, basically, the study is going to look at what we need to do to treat our water to reduce the total dissolved solid level, because we have a certain permit requirement, and to meet that permit requirement, we need to be sure that we, that the effluent leaving the plant meets that total dissolved solid requirement, and so this study is actually what we need to, it will tell us what we need to do to accomplish that.
Don't know that, no?
Well, we actually are going to have to install probably an additional system to assure that we meet our permit requirement for the total dissolved solids, and so that's what actually this study is going towards.
Is that for a resale to HDPP?
And then, and then beyond that, too, selling to the High Desert Power Project, they actually desire to have a lower level than what our permit requirement is, and so if we want to take it to that lower level, we'd have to have further treatment to achieve that, to sell water to them.
This study will tell us something we don't now know.
That's correct, and working out the details, the system, to actually accomplish that treatment so that we can meet our, both meet our permit requirement and also sell recycled water.
Brian, is it correct also that this is going to really help us identify what is the best TDS removal system? It's going to evaluate a number of different ways to do it, but ensure and recommend to us the best solution, given the complexity of our two issues, that's with respect to meeting the permit, but also the selling of reclaimed water?
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a good summary, because we want to make sure that we have a reliable system, but also something that's economical long-term.
We're going to do some sales to the, we're going to use some water, recycled water on this ballpark.
That is right.
But our main use is going to be to the power project, is that right?
Correct.
Will we ever produce any that exceeds the needs of the power project?
It's possible at certain times, because they don't always use a constant amount, but during peak times, they could use everything we produce.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D-9, award of contract. Award of contract to Shipley Construction. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the Victorville Water District Board of Directors award Shipley Construction a contract in the amount of $210,000 to furnish, deliver, and install two 20,000-gallon well-water flush tanks at well numbers 130 and 131 as budgeted for in the fiscal year 2016, 2017 capital improvement project budget.
Okay, last question, and then I'm done.
I doubt that.
We're going to put two 20,000 gallon tanks next to the well, so that instead of flushing the lines and sending that down in the street, we're going to put it in a tank.
Yeah.
What are we going to do with it once it gets to the tank?
They're basically, you can consider it a seepage pit or a septic tank type configuration, so it'll just leach into the ground, and this is just at startup for the first few minutes, and it's shut down for a minute or so, so it's just when they fire up and shut down every day.
We're not going to do any significant replacement of aquifer?
No, no.
I just want to point out, that was another question.
Oh.
But they're not, they're not for when you have to flush your well for, you know, multiple hours or anything.
One more.
You could ask as many questions as you like. I'm just giving you.
There's no other use for that water?
No, it's not, you know, potable. I mean, it would be.
Not sand and grit.
It's got, yes, yeah, and it's a real short duration.
Can't, can't use just an open lagoon?
I'm sorry, what?
Can't use just an open lagoon?
Um, you'd need some land to do it, and most of these well sites are on a pretty small footprint, and a lot of them in residential neighborhoods.
Do you have a visual map of wells 130 and 131?
I apologize, we don't. One of them is by Dos Palmas, over there by Rancho Motors, and the other one is off Village over by Puesta del Sol Elementary School. I can get you a map later. I can send you one.
Thank you.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And item D-10, Councilmember Gomez appoints to the Planning Commission and Community Services Advisory Committee. Any action is at the discretion of the city council. Go ahead, Ms. Gomez.
I'm confused. I thought this appointment was to the Planning Commission, but it's not. It's to the...
We have...
The additional information that's on the dais is for her appointment to the Community Services Advisory.
Okay. There's no Planning Commission appointment?
There is a Planning Commission appointment, that that's in the agenda.
That's what?
That, that is part of the agenda, the Planning Commissioner appointment. I didn't have the information for the other appointee until after the agenda was posted.
Go ahead, Ms. Gomez.
If you guys have any questions, I have both of them present, so you're more than welcome to ask.
I request that you handle them separately.
I move approval of the Planning Commission, of the Community Advisory Appointment.
Second.
The Advisory Committee?
Yeah. Community Services Advisory Committee, yes.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy and second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
And for the Planning Commission?
I really was curious what the Charro Federation was, the American Charro. It's actually Charro, but English speakers aren't good at rolling their hearts, so I'm going to round it. It's really interesting, if anyone doesn't know what they do, this wonderful horsemanship and roping. Now, I guess I'm curious how this qualification be on the Planning Commission, but I was sure impressed with the videos.
Ramiro, si quieres llegar adelante para contestar la pregunta que tiene el señor?
What?
Are we supposed to?
Ramiro is coming to answer your question.
My name is Ramiro Rodriguez. As you know, I'm, I'm simulated to be on the Planning Commission. Thing about the Charros, it's just my pastime. It's, I'm, like, we're born with horses. The Charro is just another word for a cowboy, Mexican cowboy. That's it. I represent a group, a national group, that we organize events throughout the country. We started our first rodeo here, and I managed it from, well, from 1983 to 1997, and then it was in the family since 1972. So I've been in the business, and that's, you know, we've made arenas, we've made sheds, we made barns, everything configuring to the statutes of the City of Industry, City of Almonte, South Almonte, where we're hosting our events. That's just something we do on the side also. We entertain museums for our organizations. We're having one right now in Amerio Tejas, Texas, for the chararia and the cowboys. So that's basically, Charro is basically just the pastime of what I do, what I represent. That's my substance, that's who I am. And so the Planning Committee, Planning Department, I'm a, I'm very proud resident here of Victorville, California. I moved, been living up here in the high desert about eight years. Victorville homeowner since about five years, and I plan to live out the rest of my life here. I enjoy it. I have a stay-at-home business. I design belt buckles for the rodeo industry and for the mariachi industry, so it gives me a lot of time, free time, to do other projects that I tend to do, free time to, if somebody wants me to go see this project, that building, I have that ability to do that, since I have my own, my own schedule. So the Planning Department, I've gotten over some of the planning designs that they've sent me, I've read over the designs, and I understand them, because table of contents. I'm not an engineer, and I'm an architect, but I understand basically what I'm reading, what it's about, the necessities of the city, and also necessities of business. I'm pro-business. I pretty much, if something is, is generate revenue, you know, all I had to go for that, you know, wish him the best. So I'm pro-business, but like I also stated, I pretty much know the needs of the people and the needs of the city, and to progress the city ahead in revenue, and to beautify the city in any case, in case something comes up that's not proper for the city. Well, I'm also a very good team player. I know it's not just one person's decision, but like I see with you up here, it's everybody's decision to come to an understanding. And if you don't, if you don't agree with it, try to inform the other person with the reasons that you disagree, and understand the things you can change, and comprehend the things you can't. Simple as that.
Thank you.
Are you a horseman or a roper?
Yes, sir. Well, about 40 pounds ago, I used to be. Now I just organize the events. My, my son rides professionally. He competes. But I used to do that, and that's why I walk with a limp. I have all the broken fingers to show it, and, but I, I love the horse. The horse people are a group of their own. No matter what language we speak, what nationality we are, we still got to get up in the morning and feed the horses and clean their stalls. So that's what binds us, you know, the, the brothership of the, of the horse.
Riding was just spectacular. I mean, if you haven't seen what they do, go online, just Google American Charro Association.
Oh, it's beautiful.
You and I have talked a couple of times.
Yes, sir.
I think it'd be great to have on the Planning Commission.
And one of the things is, we want to bring a little bit more, there's all these, these horse people around here in the overlying areas, and we want to unite them, because there's really nothing up here. Everybody has to go down the hill. If we can get something together and have something organized to, to calm all the myths about what chararia is actually about. Chararia is just rodeo with a little more style, is all it is. The trick roping, instead of the eight seconds or, or the five seconds to rope a bull, we do it more with trick roping, and we get assessed points over that. And it's the same thing. Plus, what we want to do, integrate the non-Hispanics into chararia. In Chicago, we started some Charro schools over here. We have all different nationalities involved in chararias, like the rodeo right now. The rodeo's taken up in Brazil now.
Sir, I'm sorry, I think we got away from what we were...
Okay, go ahead. I'm just answering his question, Mr. Cox, Mr. Kennedy's question. Any other questions? Would you like to know about the Charros? Okay, thank you very much.
Very much.
I move approval?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
Motion carries with...
No.
I'm...
Two no's and an abstention.
Oh, I'm, oh, I'm sorry. Didn't get an abstention. Ready abstained?
Question was, yeah, the vote fails.
Because we, we need to have...
Majority.
Abstentions go with the majority, and we don't have a majority.
So would you please explain what that means for the public and also for myself?
There's two yes and two no votes, and there's one abstention. And under the council's rules, abstentions go with the, they're counted with the majority. In this case, we don't have a majority. So it's a split vote, so it fails.
When's the 90-day period?
That would be at the end of March.
Can you give me a date for that, please?
March 31st.
If I may ask, what's the no for? You can comment if you like. If you're not, then we can just begin to assume, right?
It's not required to answer. I move on to public comments. And I do have two cards.
I follow the daily press consistently, and I read with great interest Shay Johnson's article lately regarding kind of a complicated, sounds like a little bit of a mess, but JPA and your Victor Valley Wastewater Reclamation Authority. It, it brought out the aspect of an audit, and was kind of negative on, on some of the issues of transparency and how bidding was working. But I don't want to deal with the negative on that. I, I think this council is working very hard on infrastructure. I'm a big believer of infrastructure. I'm a builder by trade, and I think you're doing a great job. Blanca, new to this, the, the majority of city council stuff is infrastructure, and keeping infrastructure going is key to keeping the city going and keeping people employed and attracting business. I think Victorville, regarding this situation with the JPA, especially you, Jim Kennedy, you have stand, stood out in an awkward situation, and I think you've made adjustments in that you're trying to work in cooperation in things to, to make it more effective and fiscal accountability. So I commend all of you and the city of Victorville for trying to, to get some resolution out of this, but in, in some ways, you're getting thrown under the bus with areas that I don't think you agreed with, so. Secondly, I'd like to address my friend, and a good friend, Blanca Gomez. It's been an interesting start, and, but I'm glad you got elected. I feel you add a cultural balance for your community and to the council. I think you have lots of character, and I think they found that out, and a commitment to your constituents for transparency. And you want to be a resource to your community, to educate them about the governance and local politics. I think that stands out. I, I'm a little bit concerned that her appointments did not get approved, but I, I know you with character, as I said, in that you'll keep trying, and I, I think that in time, I think we'll all come to understand each other and, and work together and, and respect each other's differences and plus approaches. With your balance of educating the public, I know that's it. I, I don't want you to forget that that also includes...
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay, I don't want you to forget that that includes you.
Thank you. The next card that I have is Alandro Esquivel. Or Alandra Esquivel. Do you speak? Oh, I'm sorry, you understood you had to fill out a card just to come in? Not a problem. Would you like to speak? You already filled out the card, so you are more than welcome. All right, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Now we can have our mayor's report.
City manager's report.
City manager's report.
Yeah. I don't, I don't want that promotion, I can't afford the pay cut.
City manager's report.
I have a couple of items. You know, we joke in staff meetings sometimes when we have an agenda like, like today, that this is a Brian meeting, and we all decide that we're not going to show up. And I think evidence tonight shows that maybe when we have a meeting like this, Keith and I should sit in the audience and just have Brian and Doug sit up here to answer these questions, because invariably, we'll, we'll give it a shot, and then we have to call them up anyway. But anyway, a few announcements. The Victorville City Library is now, accepts passport applications, so if you are looking to travel abroad, you can make an appointment at the library to get your passport, if you'd prefer to do that over going to the post office. Nothing against the post office. I go there regularly, because my mailbox was broken into. On Saturday, March 1st, it'll be our first neighborhood cleanup and free dump day of 2017. The event location is tentatively set for the old Walmart located at Bear Valley Road and Balsam Avenue. We all know that, well, most people know that there's been a problem there with homelessness, and there's quite a bit of debris there. So that'll be the cleanup location, but it'll also be free dump day for Victorville residents. And then going into March a little bit, March 18th, we have a recycling drop-off center, the Clean Sweep. That'll be at the recycling drop-off center on Anacapa. Run in the Park, March 18th, is at Eagle Ranch Park. It'll be the Shamrock Run. So if you've been out drinking green beer on the 17th, wake up early and come and run it off on the 18th, and stay in your green, I guess. And then finally, the, our big community cleanup for the spring will be April 8th, and there'll be more information coming on that. But those of you who've participated, I thank you for that. We usually have more than 1,000 people come out to help clean up all over the city, so looking forward to that event.
Thank you. Council members, I'll start over here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to thank Brian and Doug and the rest of the staff for a lot of great information tonight. When it comes to infrastructure and our water services, there, there just can't emphasize enough how important it is to the growth of our city, because if you look at the next 20 years, we could literally have 200,000 people in our city alone. The problem is, is that we're about half grown out. I mean, these aren't exact numbers, I'm just giving you an example. So you see a lot of empty lots out there. That growth is still coming. And the problem is, is that incrementally, we've grown for 50, 60 years, and what, the only guidance or comments I'd have for city staff is just as we go forward, certainly we are very concerned about Victorville. But it's also, no matter how much people don't understand it or don't like it, we are connected with our neighbors in ways that people really don't understand. And it's so easy to get petty and, and think about our differences, but we, we are joined together in this. And so really, when we're talking about consultants that are looking at making recommendations for what we're going to do, you know, if, if we could look out further, five, 10, 15, 20 years, and, and again, it's not with any specifics, but that was not done in 1976. They, they had no idea what this was going to become. And so some of our agreements, I think, are outdated, quite frankly. But anyway, going forward, again, we've got a tremendous amount of growth on the way. And that's really my only comments, and again, appreciate staff work. Thanks.
I don't want to say too much about this controversy in the works at VVWR, because it is so complicated, and it's so old. That agreement was written in 1976. This valley doesn't look anything like it looked in 1976. So what was anticipated then isn't where we are today, and some of the elements of that agreement need to be reworked. And I'm hopeful that as we go forward in the next year or so, we'll work them out. I was, when I first came on the council six years ago, I was the alternate for one year on the VVWR board, and I've been the, the primary representative for the last five years. Joint Powers Authority is a very odd and awkward kind of governing body. It's made up of four different municipalities, well, three municipalities in the county. Nobody elects the board at VVWR. They elect us to our council seats. It's a, it's just a, it's an odd situation. And this one is unusual in that the four participants are not really equal. Victorville has always provided, you know, the vast majority of the flows to that agency. The other three altogether account for about 40%. We account for about 60% today. It's been as high as 70%. So it's a, it's a very unusual arrangement. The one thing I want to say is, I believe when the dust settles on that OIG audit, they will not ask VVWR to refund $32 million. I don't, I'm just speaking for myself, I don't think that will happen. I think they had legitimate criticisms of, of some change orders. But overall, the project was huge. It's finished, it's completed, it accomplished the objective. It had some very unfortunate aspects, including the death of a worker. There are a lot of issues with that thing, but I do not believe that we need to be in fear that the tone of that article, Shay's article, which frankly was very balanced, I didn't have any disagreement with him. I don't think we should all be afraid that VVWR is going to have to pony up $32 million. I don't think that'll ever happen. I think it will get resolved and worked out. And... out, and, uh, I'm hopeful that we will come to a revised agreement that will make everybody happy, that's my hope.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy, for representing us with VVWRA.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um, thank everyone for turning out tonight, I'm not going to go into what I've been doing the past two weeks because it would take a couple of hours and you don't want to hear it, and I know that. I get called at home and the office, I meet with individuals, anyone has a question, give me a call, I will get you the answer, thank you very much for participating.
Blanca? In my Council comments, I'd like to say thank you to Josie, she probably already left from Burt Tech, um, thank you for supporting the recycling project, and congratulations to those students who also support, supported and encouraged that recycling program. Daisy Garcia, thank you so much, to their parents, Daisy, Destiny Morales, and then, of course, um, for Monterey, Montessori, the youngest child, I didn't get her name, but thank you to her too, for being participants, and I also do a lot of meetings and I will take the time to let my community know what, what's going on, so I have a few, few things of, of things that I like to continue on. Also, Scott, thank you, thank you for congratulating me and acknowledging me, and acknowledging the interest in adding to that culture part. I definitely do want to educate the people about local government, and this is what I'm here for.
Blanca, if it's pertaining to the city, yes.
I will keep trying and respect each other's differences, and thank you, we are working towards that, uh, very strongly, and in regards to the appointees, Vivian, you were approved, it was unanimous, congratulations. Ramiro, we have a lot of work ahead of us, we need to wake up our community and especially our voters. We shall be working with our constituents from now on, we have a minimum of four years, long time to go, and everyone that is in this room, please, you are invited in this calling, this is a call to action. Also, um, I brought this up earlier, uh, something has been going, going on in the news, Duncan Hicks, uh, visited our police station in the City of Victorville, and he got service that was not acceptable, not acceptable according to him, so my question is to the staff, uh, is this the way that the city treats some of our residents, or is it a city issue, what can we do to address it? Could this be taken to staff and be brought as a report to see what that incident was?
Uh, actually, it's not a city issue, it's a Sheriff's Department issue, uh, so I would ask Chief, Chief Schuler if you have any, any comments or if you'd prefer to provide a written report.
I, I want to add, when this initially happened, um, we reached out to, to Mr. Hicks to make sure that, uh, he got what he, uh, needed, uh, and assured him that he can come to the station at any time, um, we, we definitely don't want to create a, um, an atmosphere where people don't want to come to, to the station or report, um, crimes or certain things. Um, the final, the final component to this is, is the personnel issue, and, uh, we're dealing with that administratively, um, I can't comment too much on that right now, but, uh, yeah, it's, it's an incident that happened that we're dealing with right now.
And similarly, from the city, anytime we have an incident, uh, where an employee of the city, uh, perhaps is disciplined or not, uh, that's not something that is, uh, known to the public, it's not something to share with the public due to privacy reasons.
And then the next item is, um, I do hold town hall meetings, uh, with several concerns, which I would be, I will be bringing to the next Council meeting, and lastly, but not, not last, right, thank you, Mr. Metzler, for, and the staff also, for assisting Alex Gonzalez in his concern for getting those lights at the church, I really appreciate that night, and I know we all do, thank you.
There being no other business before the Council, this, uh, meeting is adjourned to 5:00 PM on Wednesday, February the 15th, 2017, thank you.